Welcome to our Tuesday, April 28th, 2020 Council Meetings. I'm Margaret F. Robin, currently serving as Mayor. And today, we are having two City Council Meetings. The first one is a called meeting. We have one item on that agenda. And then we will go into our work session where we will hear from our school system about our Vance Middle School. And we will hear about our comprehensive plan that's been recently finished, which for Bristol, Tennessee, is the first time to pull together all the work into that we do on a regular basis, some that we haven't done as much into a comprehensive plan. So we're very excited to hear about that. So I want to welcome everybody who's joining us and also welcome everyone who's here. Tara Music, would you please call the roll for us?
Our Robin?
Here.
King?
Here.
Powers?
Here.
Luttrell?
Here.
And Turner?
Here.
Right, thank you very much. Next, for each of our meetings, and I'm hoping that Attorney Smith, that we can do it once today, not necessarily for each meeting. You can advise us on that if we need to do it again for opening the work session. And if you can just explain so that we're online for doing that correctly.
Yes, Mayor. We are meeting electronically in compliance with Governor Lee's electronic or executive order number 16, which suspended the provisions of the Open Meetings Act through May 18th, 2020, or 2020, to the extent necessary to allow you to conduct your business electronically rather than meeting physically in person. If you want to meet electronically, you as a governing body need to make a finding that you are meeting electronically in order to preserve the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans. And so you have made this finding at previous meetings. I think if anybody feels differently at this point, they should express that they no longer agree that meeting was necessary. If not, consent vote would be appropriate.
All right. Do I have consensus? And that'll be for our called meeting and then going into our work session. Everybody good?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So first, first and only on our called meeting, we have ordinance 20-6, amending chapter 26 of for civil emergencies of the Code of Emergencies. Mr. Sora, would you like to fill us in and prepare us for that issue?
Yes, Mayor. Today, you'll consider ordinance 20-6 on second reading. At the called meeting on April 20th, City Council approved on first reading an amendment to chapter 26, which deals with the opportunity for the mayor or the city manager to declare either a local or civil emergency. The code of ordinance is supposed to be amended to provide for council oversight over any declaration of local or civil emergency. This amendment would ensure that the majority of city council supports the declaration of emergency. The proposed amendment would require that a resolution be approved by city council supporting the declaration within seven days of its issuance for it to remain in effect. During second reading, if it's approved on second reading unanimously, then the way the ordinance is crafted, the effective date would be immediate. And that would, that also triggers the resolution 2029 that we have behind us on the agenda. So with that, I'd be glad to respond to any questions. And also Danielle Smith, our city attorney is also on the line. He can do the same.
Right. Would council have questions? And I spoke not correctly. We actually have two items, but they're both dealing with the same issue. One of them following with what we're approving in the first one. Anybody have any questions? I know we talked about it last time. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve. I don't have all the numbers in front of me, but motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
All right, is second?
Second.
All right, I think events came first. Is there further discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, that's how we move through our agenda. And again, we talked about this quite a bit at our last meeting. Tara, would you call the roll?
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
All right. Next on our agenda is resolution 20-29, and it approves the extension of an executive order proclaiming a civil and local emergency. And Mr. Sora can explain the process for how this happens and why it's important to follow when the county health department issues an order.
As council may recall, on March 30th, City Council, or excuse me, the mayor and I both issued executive order number 20-5, which referenced Sullivan County Regional Health Department's Safer at Home Public Health Order Number One. Again, as you may recall, that was a request of the health department when they issued the Safer at Home Order, that the local governing bodies within Sullivan County also supported by declaration and/or by support of the local governing body. With the passage of ordinance 20-6 a few moments ago, then this now requires any future declaration to have within seven days the approval of city council for the order to remain in effect. Yesterday, also at the request of Sullivan County Health Department, the executive order 20-5 was issued, and it references Sullivan County COVID-19 Phase One Public Health Order Number Two, which deals essentially with the reopening of the local economy. Public Health Order Number Two became effective in Sullivan County at 12:01 Eastern Standard Time on Monday, April 27. So now, in accordance with ordinance 20-6, as it's amended in section 26-7 of our Code of Ordinance, it now requires that the declaration of a local and civil emergency to have the majority approval of city council within seven days. So resolution 20-29 reflects that. The resolution is detailed in the information on board dogs. And also attached to that resolution is Sullivan County Public Health Order Number Two.
Great. Anyone have questions for Mr. Sora at this time?
The only question I have is that I know that there's been some discussion about what was contained within the order and how closely it mirrors the governor. Where are we with that?
It's, the order is substantively different from the governor's order. It is less restrictive. The governor's order is still rolling out. It's rolling out in phases. Matter of fact, they're going to discuss the opening of gyms today. There's, and this is, it's a very tiered form of rollout. The governor's plan is. The Sullivan County Plan is a much more tightly written document. They're really, the substantive, it talks a lot about universal guidelines in terms of safer type protocols, distancing, hygiene, mask, the use of masks, temp checks for employees. It encourages telecommuting, all the things that are also included in the governor's, in the governor's rollout of his plan. The, I can think the real substance is in page four and five of the county's order. And it talks about schools and organized youth activities that are currently closed, would remain closed. It emphasizes that visits to senior living facilities and hospitals should be prohibited. It does speak to large venues. It talks about physical distancing in order for those large venues to open, but it does allow for the opening of movie theaters, sporting venues, places of worship, sit-down restaurants. But once again, emphasizes the social distancing protocols that we've had now for the last month. It does speak to elective surgeries that they may resume. Dental offices and healthcare practices may be open while maintaining social distancing and following CDC recommendations for appropriate PPE and special guidance. It speaks to nonessential businesses. It says they may open, but adhere to strict social distancing guidelines, using precautionary measures. And once again, following the guidance by the state of Tennessee specific to that business type. And then personal contact businesses such as barber shops, nail salons, cosmetology businesses, and so forth. They cannot, that cannot maintain social distancing measures, may not reopen until appropriate safety guidelines have been adopted by the Tennessee Department.
Thank you.
All right. And I think the state task force that's been working really hard for, I have to go back and look, probably about two and a half weeks, with subcommittees, et cetera, like Mr. Sora said, they are rolling out recommendations for, we saw Friday, for retail and restaurants, anticipating that probably by the end of the week, they will have guidelines for most types of businesses. So that will give folks some guidelines to follow. But there are overall guidelines that are in our order that came from the state. There are 10 things for employers to be doing and five things for employees that are recommended. And also, I would remind, there's still, the CDC recommendation is, in Phase One, is still gatherings of 10 or less. So that's very important to emphasize. Also, our vulnerable populations are still recommended to be at home as much as possible or be out of the public interaction as much as possible. So just encourage people and just taking trips out. Husband went to Lowe's and some other shopping. People really, really need to pay attention. If this is to work, to stay open, to be able to continue to open more, we have got to keep our numbers down. That's what's going to be watched by our health department as well as across the state. And we have to maintain the numbers that we've had with a slow increase, with plateauing, and keeping it equal. Hopefully, that has been due to good adherence to the practices. So now that we're getting out and about, we need to follow those even more carefully. So, all right. Any other discussion or questions?
I guess it's important to note that of us doing this, we are doing this just based on what is coming out of the health department on a local level. And if there are any changes to that, then we will also need to change hours that we fall, we fall under those guidelines from our Sullivan County Health Department, correct?
That's my understanding. So if any time, if any time, or if next week, if there's another medical release from our health department, medical director, Dr. May, who has the authority to sign these, that yes, we would have to get, so if that were Public Health Order Number Three, we would have to come back with another resolution affirming that we are in agreement to follow that and that any follow-up or things we need to do, we then have the power to do them with that order. So.
And to be clear, we are in Phase One. And one of the criteria for Phase One is that we see a decline or stabilization of the positive testing numbers. And I guess a question that would be important to know, because we had to spend 14 days in Phase One at, under those circumstances, before Phase Two can be considered. So the question is, what is the date that we began the 14-day decline or stabilization?
Can't speak to that. The order became effective yesterday. I'm not sure about the 14 days that the health department is tracking. But I think, I think part of the question is, and I think maybe Councilman Turner's question is, if there's substantive change in this, in other words, a Public Health Order Number Three, then there would need to be another declaration and another resolution. And I think that's the way we would all interpret it, if that was your question.
Well, my question, that's part of it. But the other part of it is, we're in Phase One. The expectation to get to Phase Two? And what type of time period, given the number of days that we've already been in decline and stabilization? Where does that leave us?
I would think, that's a health, public health question. And I think we've heard sometimes from some things, but it's not just the decline. It's how many tests you're doing. And so there's a formula for looking at that. What's the amount of your capacity of your hospital? Which certainly, at this point, we have capacity. But so, so all those things come into effect. The easiest one for us all to see is the numbers. But all that comes into a formula to be able to say when we can go to the next phase. I would count it two weeks from now. And with that possibility, that perhaps it happens sooner. So that, but that is not a public health opinion. That is my opinion, that that's erring on the side of caution and without consulting our public health folks. So we are just seeing the results coming back from last week's opening up of testing. So as we see that come into full effect, and, and also, I'll remind, from what it appears with infectious diseases, things can change in a very short period of time. We could have good numbers and have an outbreak that would change that rapidly. Okay, I can't remember. I don't, did we have a motion? Who's keeping track?
No motion.
I think that was a question. Now we're ready for the motion, so.
So this is a motion to approve ordinance 20.6?
Yes. There's your.
No, no, this is a motion.
Or resolution 2029, sorry. Oh, sorry. Okay, motion for approval of resolution 2029.
Thank you.
Second.
Yeah, okay, Mailin second. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, I think Tara, we're ready for voting.
Fire Robin?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
All right. So that it stands approved, both of those things. And if no one has any other comments during our city, called City Council meeting, we will move into our city council. I'll do, adjourn it, adjourn our called meeting and open our work session. Is that appropriate? Great. So, thank you very much. We appreciate, I have thought we do need to learn some sign language. That could be very helpful. So the thumbs up and nods are all good, but maybe we can even go beyond that. And also, I failed to say that if I have internet difficulty, which I have had some instability at different times, Vice Mayor Luttrell, you'll be ready to take over. And if he fails, we'll move down the line to, to, till we don't have a quorum anymore. Anyway, we are so grateful to have our schools here and had them at our last work session. Appreciate the updates. But we do have some business that we continue doing. So I think we asked for a Vance update, Mr. Sora, before. Do you want to introduce it with anything? And, oh, I forgot to ask you to introduce the staff and the guests who are here. I left that out. So you could take a moment, do that, and then introduce our school folks.
Well, first, we have Dr. Annette Tudor and Ed Dupuy with us from our school system to discuss the Vance Middle School. They'll be followed by Glenn Walters, who will discuss our comprehensive plan. And then onboard, we also have Terry Napier, Tim Beavers, Sherith Young, Tom Anderson, and John Luttrell, in addition to Danielle and Tara, which you can see on your screen.
And I note that Shane Varney, who is also incognito, is our director, producer, IT miracle worker, et cetera. So.
Absolutely. Absolutely. He's, he's our go-to person now.
So very much in demand. So do you want to introduce the Vance topic, Mr. Sora?
Yes, be glad to. Dr. Tudor and Ed Dupuy are with us here today. As you're aware, Vance Middle School is under construction. I think with, and then I'll elaborate more on this, but I think there's an anticipated opening date in the fall of 2021. You can see a lot of activity onsite now. The gymnasium is being rehabbed. And with that, I think, I think I'll turn it over to people who actually know what's going on.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Sora. Thank you. Thank you again for having us here. I'm gonna let Ed do the bulk of the talking, because he really is the person in the know. He's on that job site every day. So he definitely knows where the project stands inside and out. But Mr. Sora is correct. We do have a lot of visible activity going on. So far, knock on wood, we have not seen significant delays in the project. As a result of COVID-19, we've been able to continue with the project. The only thing that's really impacted our timeline would be weather, and that'll be something we deal with all the time anyway. And so we're, obviously, those crews for little construction are adjusting accordingly. But you'll, I think Ed's gonna show you some exciting, visible pictures of the progress here in just a minute. And you'll be able, if you need a field trip and an opportunity to get out of your house or your workspace, drive by. There's some great things you can see now in terms of the concrete slab where the new education wing is going to be. You can't see much, obviously, in the gym renovation. But at some point in the near future, if we can socially distance well enough, I'd invite you all to, to the job site. Maybe we can do that in shifts or some way to control that a little bit. But Ed and I can work on that to get you all into the gym. So you can kind of see the progress there and get on the job site and really see with your own eyes what's going on, so you can get excited about it like we are. That is definitely where we're gaining momentum and progress in our school district and that I would rather focus our attention on that than anything related to COVID-19 at this point. So, so if you're interested in that, we can try to arrange that in the coming weeks so that you can get onsite. But I'm gonna turn it over to Ed at this point, and he can give you more information about the project and where we stand and show you some visual representations of that. And then if you have questions as a follow-up, we're happy to answer those. Ed?
Thank you, Dr. Tudor. Good morning, everyone. Let me see if I can get my screen to share and give you some ideas of where we've been last little bit on the site. It is hard to see what's going on onsite, but there is a lot of activity going on. Give you some pictures. Feel free to drop in with questions. You can ask questions at the end, however you'd like to do this. This is a picture that, for us, is a milestone on the project. Our superintendent, Burwell Superintendent Scott Wise, took this picture about 7 o'clock yesterday morning. That's our first big slab pour right at sunrise. They've been at it for three hours when that sun came up. They poured 175 yards of concrete, 16,000 square foot. And that's a, it's a milestone on our project. That really brings a lot of, a lot of effort in the installation of the micro piles, the construction of the grade beams, construction of pile crack caps, you know, plumbing installation, electrical installation to fruition by pouring concrete on top of it. But that lets proceed to the next phase of that building, which is something that's important to us. And so that's a nice picture that we got from him. It's definitely kind of indicates that we're making progress. Job's done well. We're making a lot of progress. Weather has been an issue. This is some of the guys that have put down that 175 yards today. They've also done a lot of the concrete work, but you can kind of see the effort it takes to put down a concrete slab, especially when you put it down in three hours. So that's a pretty interesting event that took place yesterday. And I'll give you some more information about what we're gonna do next. Kind of review quickly the layout of the building, so you can have a reference. This is a layout of kind of our second floor area. The bottom of the page is Ed's Montage Avenue. This page down here, I don't know if you see my pointer or not. The existing gym sits right here. And of course, the new three-story classroom wing sits right up here. College would be at the top of your screen. Kind of give you some bearings, our three-story classroom wing. The area between our gym and the classroom wing is what we call Main Street. It's the area that has the main entryway, the administrative areas, the CDC, special resource areas. It's the area that has the main entryway, the administrative areas, the CDC, special resource areas, the lobby. The little theater, the media center, and of course, the cafeteria, and then the kitchen off to the side. So this kind of give you some bearings as you see some pictures here as we move forward. Again, if you've got any questions, please feel free to jump in. This is a picture yesterday about ten o'clock, maybe eleven o'clock. The hundred and seventy five yards of concrete, oh, sorry about that, hundred and seventy five yards of concrete is poured. The finishes are waiting to get on it. So that's a really interesting seat thing to see. The balance of the slab, you'll see there's a concrete or a wooden form structure here of a concrete wall. The balance of the slab between that concrete wall and our existing slab. They'll be preparing it for for pouring the latter part of next week or the first part of next week. And that'll get the majority of that slab done. What that'll do is give us the ability to start setting structural steel. Structural steel start coming onsite, I believe, latter part of next week, early part of next the other week. Give a little time for that concrete to cure, and then you'll start seeing that structural steel set. So that'll probably be in middle of May. You'll start seeing structural steel jump up, which will be really exciting. Because then you can really see the building begin to take shape. For your information, this, of course, is the existing gym. Over here to the right of the end of the existing gym, you'll see a con- or a gravel pad. That's the where our art resource classrooms are are to be constructed. We need that area to be constructed in order to be able to use the gym. Because we have bathrooms in that area, and we we've got to make sure we got adequate bathrooms for the the people that we have in the gymnasium. The area between the existing gym and the classroom wing is the Main Street. So you'll see it as the as the as the dirt between the two buildings. If you can see the the wooden formwork here, the top of it. And then the top of this wall against the gym wall is actually the slab elevation for that. Sorry about that. Is actually the slab elevation for the Main Street. So you see where about where it's going to sit. The little theater theater will sit right in this area, right here at the bottom of the of the the walls. Of course, this little structure here, sitting right there by the slab, is the elevator pit. But you see, as we move up through here, the dining area is back where the job site trailers are. And the cafeteria be where these trucks are parked. So it kind of gives you an idea of the layout of this job. It also kind of gives you the idea of how tight this job is. And and how really well it's progressed despite the weather. This is a picture of our gymnasium from actually on top of the the building. We're actually flying above the existing building, looking back to the gym. And you see the three story classroom wing back here. This is yellow plastic, three twenty mil plastic that we had in the concrete slab. So this existing gym, you see, we've got about sixty percent of the new roof on. They're actually working as much as they can. They're back working today. Weather's kind of impacted them a little bit. You also see where the windows along the existing gym wall have been opened up. So that we can put translucent wall panels and their glass in there to allow as much light into the building as possible. Where the Blue Boom lift is sitting is where the sidewalk will be. And of course, the parking lot will be down to the very bottom of the picture. And off to the right, you see the old art room. You'll see the little white roof sitting off to the right. That's gonna be converted to a team room. And of course, we'll have a canopy over that area to allow, you know, students to get off buses, get under a canopy and get into the building. So a lot of interesting stuff going on on the outside that you can see. This is a picture of the classroom, the art resource classroom wing. They're excavating foundations where you see the rebar sticking up. They've already poured the foundations. And off to the left, out of the picture, you see masons, or you would see masons who are actually laying bricks. So we actually have a plumbing contractor on the backside who's actually installing sanitary piping. So just about every time we get a flat spot we work in, they're working in it. So they've been very aggressive on the work schedule, which has been very beneficial to us. If you have not been in the gym for a while, it it has changed a lot. If you look to the left, and it's hard to see in this picture, but the bleachers, the existing bleachers, half of them are gone. They cut out the bottom half, demolished them, actually poured the floor slabs back. Had done a little work on walkways. And so now we have the ability to have two gym floors crosswise and then one lengthwise. So that'll allow us for the PE or or whatever we need to do in that gym. You also see up in the tresses, a lot of the existing stuff's gone. There is new duck work up there. There is new electrical up there. And and that area is progressing well. Underneath the bleachers are the locker rooms for team locker rooms for sports. And then PE locker rooms for PE classes. Those, the the masonry is done, probably eighty five percent in there. Plumbing is probably around sixty percent in there, so that area has progressed real well. I'm actually standing on the stage. If you look hard to the left, you can see some of the masonry for the stage wall. That wall will go all the way up and isolate the stage from the gym, so we can use that stage area for special activities. And you're looking at the mezzanine. That's the the masonry wall. And on the backside of that will be, of course, the the weight room. Underneath the weight room in the old lobby, all of that's been removed. There's the stairwells have been tore out. New stairwells have been put in. And those will be, that's where the main entryway will be in the connection to the art resource classroom.
Ed, real quick, um, what's the gonna be the difference in the seating capacity of previous versus now? Is there any difference, more or less?
It's I don't know exactly. I think it will be slightly less. One thing that happens when you rehab a gym is that you do go in, you have ADA requirements that require a different width seats. From eighteen to twenty two inch. That impacts us a little bit. So I don't have an exact number, but I'm thinking in the hundred, hundred fifty range. The difference will be down. But we will be ADA accessible, so that's a big advantage. We will be able to. Anybody wants to come to a game, wants to come to an event, will be able to be accommodated. So that's a very, very much of an improvement over what we used to have.
Hey, Ed, while we're in the gym, as far as the seating goes, I know those bleachers were in pretty rough shape. Are we putting in all new bleachers? Or what exactly is going to be the, what are we using for seating?
Well, there's actually two different, two different questions there. We actually have telescoping bleachers that we've installed or will be installing where we tore out the old bleachers. So those can be extended, and so you'll have, you know, bleachers from the top of the wall all the way down to the floor. So those new bleachers are part of the project. We were working toward on the upper part where we left the existing concrete risers. We were working toward using the existing gym seats. That just became cost prohibitive and just did not really fit into what we needed to do with the gym. So we've got proposals that we're moving forward to to actually have a seating, actually individual seating up on the old concrete bleachers. So when we're done, we'll have a very nice seating.
And the mezzanine, will the mezzanine still have that basketball court up on top?
It will not. It is primarily set up as a weight room and a training room. The the main floor here will have six goals. So you can play lengthwise, crosswise, or you can play on all six goals if you're if you're doing training. So we've got plenty, plenty of basketball facilities for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we get out of gym? All right, these are our two new boilers. The one of the issues that we have in putting the gym in service is that we have to put in all the electrical and mechanical in service for the whole new building. And so these are the two boilers. I'm actually standing on a couple of pumps that are are getting ready to be put in place. Out to the left of the doorway is the cooling tower foundation, which cooling tower should be here in the next week or so. And off to my right are the big electrical panels that will power the new addition. Contractors are working. Of course, one of the things that has happened, all that has to be placed in service. So that the gym can receive HVAC and electrical. In addition, we still have to keep the old building running. So that's one of the 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 obstacles that we really have to to meet in order to get this gym in line. Dr. Tudor mentioned COVID. We we've been lucky down there that we had a few minor scares at the very first. But overall, they've managed to do like the rest of the county has done, social distancing and being aware of what they're doing. And very well managing their COVID exposures. We've we've managed to be able to keep working with all the crafts. But we're, Burwell's never really unsure of what impact. A COVID incident somewhere in the world or somewhere in the nation might have on the project. So they've they've brought in everything they can bring in, and this is an example. These are the hollow metal door frames for the whole project. Normally, they'd be phased, but it's been brought in. So you'll see a lot of material stored around the project because we've tried to make sure that if we can get something released and put it in manufacturer, that we can get it as quickly as possible. So far, we've not experienced many delays. We've got a few items that we have concerns about. But overall, they've managed the impact of COVID very well, as well as the facilities that are out in the nation. Have done their best to to make their commitments to us. So those are kind of the things you have to watch out when you're in the COVID incident. This is an example. This is bar joyce instructional steel for the art classroom wing. It's been sitting here for about about a month. And we have a variety of other things on the job site. We have the steel deck for these areas. We have the metal studs for the whole building onsite. We've got a lot of the mechanical equipment for the whole project onsite. And so we've really been working to make sure the materials don't delay us from some unforeseen COVID situation. So kind of a summary of where we where we are right now. We are on a timeline for the gym to be placed in service in August of twenty. With the main school being in twenty one. We will have to demolish the old school building and finish the parking lots probably in the latter part of twenty one. Weather has been an impact. I mean, we're almost thirteen inches ahead for the year, just in the last four months. They've done everything they can to get around that. They've done some really imaginative construction techniques on the job. But that is a very aggressive timeline, but it's one we're holding to right now. Any questions that I can answer?
I have one, Ed. Was there a time lapse video setup for this project?
There was not. We looked at an actual time lapse, and the cost was pretty prohibitive. We did talk with Terry Smith one a couple of times, but never did put the thing together. We do fly the project with a drone on a regular basis, and of course, we do construction photographs. We have the drone footages. I think it's been modified, but on YouTube with a link on our website. So we do have that regular progress update that we do have my photographs.
Now, I just think it'd be be pretty cool for the citizens, you know, later on in life, you know, look back and and see what happened there.
Yeah, yeah, the costs were were pretty, pretty high for us to do that. And then we elected at that time not to do that.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, other questions?
Well, you know, bringing up finances, are we on budget on time?
Well, we're we're on budget. We've set a MAC for the project. Thirty one million, five thirty seven thousand, and that's the MAC for the, you know, the construction cost, and that's a not to exceed. We're managing contingencies inside that to to to, you know, get it, get as much bang for our buck as possible. Your overall construction budget, overall, there's costs outside the MAC that we have to pay, the architects fees and stuff like that. We're managing them them very aggressively. We're staying on budget for those. So, yeah, to answer your question, we'll be on budget. We will be below the MAC. And we will manage our our total construction costs to be below what we forecasted. So, yeah, we are on budget, on time. We we are currently on time. Construction manager is very nervous about that. We could stand a few sunny days. That would be very helpful at this point.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Four inch rain events don't work well with construction?
They kind of make it a little hard to move around and 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 get things. We've we do have some soil conditions that we have to watch that have made it challenging. But I I've seen, I've seen them on Saturday and Sunday, and I've seen them out in the rain, so they've been very aggressive.
Okay, other comments or questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Pretty huge project at any time, and especially now with what's going on. Melon, did you add anything else? No. Anybody else? If not, we will look forward to having continued updates. And if we don't visit, maybe some virtual tours of taking your phone around or something. The pictures you provided were great, and we look forward to seeing that change on a regular basis going forward. So appreciate y'all, and if there's anything we can do to be helpful. We want to be here to do that. So thank you very much. Thanks for your time that you spend with us. And hopefully, we'll see you again before too long with the next update, so.
Thank you. We're we're happy to provide an update anytime, and if we have an opportunity, we'll figure out a way to to get you an opportunity to get you on the site and be able to tour it firsthand and see what's happening in the gym. Especially as the gym becomes more finished, and certainly the goal to have that open in August or more accessible in August. So as we get closer to that, maybe in June, we can get you all there so you can see it firsthand.
Great. Also, Dr. Tudor, is I know we talked with you last week. Is there anything else you want to add today? Anticipating it'll be at least another week or so before, probably next week for the next update.
Yeah, nothing new since uh, since we spoke last week. And in terms of our services, we're diligently digging into our, we're in our last four weeks of school, which is kind of surreal for us to kind of to figure that out and navigate. And so we're now in the planning stages of what, if anything, can happen this summer in terms of bringing our students back or continuing to provide services to them over the summer for either intervention or things in in terms of preparation for next school year. And then just preparing for what next school year might look like and trying to navigate all options in terms of, we don't know what that's gonna be. And we might have to react similarly or differently, and so we're just trying to figure out all those angles at this point. So working on plans, we have another meeting for graduation this week, and so we were heading in one direction. And then we got some feedback and we did a survey. And so we're gonna kind of consult the results of that survey and determine what we're gonna do in terms of graduation and and what our seniors want. And so our high school did put out signs for all of our seniors. You may see those around town. That if there's a sign, a yard sign in someone's yard, that's a senior who lives there. And so just continue to keep this. Folks, in your thoughts and prayers, it's a difficult transition for them not to be experiencing year in things as it is for all of our students and our our parents celebrating successes at the end of the year and participating in those fun activities. It's really difficult not to be able to do those things. And that's hitting home harder than we anticipated it would. And so we're trying to figure out ways that we can reschedule those events for all of our students, K through eleven. Maybe at the beginning of the school year in some way, in some capacity. So those are just the things we continue to talk about every day and try to figure out, so.
One word you use, just to clarify, I talked about intervention. And I think to educators, that may mean different things to than to public. So if you can just explain what you mean by interventions, I think I know, but want to be sure that that's clarified for everybody.
Well, in a typical school year, that would be any students who are struggling academically with math or reading in particular. That would be kindergarten through eighth grade if they're behind on acquiring those necessary skills for basic math and reading by grade level. It also could mean for high school students, if they're behind on accruing the appropriate credits to graduate and graduate on time according to state guidelines. And in a typical year like we're experiencing now, that means really almost everybody needs some sort of intervention. Because we we will have missed nine weeks of true instructional opportunities for our students. And we, at this point, are just guessing what that long term. we, at this point, are just guessing what that long term impact will be for our students, but we're hoping that there are things that we can put in place to to minimize the results of that. Intervention also means providing necessary supports and services to our students who have disabilities or are learners who don't speak English as their primary language. Those folks are at a another level of disadvantage in terms of not being in a structured school environment for nine weeks of time. And so we're looking at planning and programming to intervene based on what their needs are that they haven't been able to get. So it's a variety of things, really.
Right. So intervention is what the school system can do to help individual students and children to do the best they can do in their school studies, which is more than just academics. It's a lot that comes into play. So thank you, and we'll see if Mr. Sora can share our crystal ball with y'all so that we can all be on the same page. So.
That would be wonderful.
We'll work on that, but we'll have to figure out how the handoff goes with six feet, six to nine feet physical distancing. So anyway, we thank you very much. We look forward. We'll probably see you again next Tuesday, and appreciate very much your time. And also, Mr. Depew, appreciate your leadership on the project as well as sharing with us today. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Okay, so now we're ready to go to the next item on our agenda, our comprehensive plan. Mr. Sora, would you like to introduce the topic?
Yes, I would. Quite some time ago, we marked on this journey, and as you mentioned, Mayor, this is the first time that this city has done a comprehensive plan. We've done a number of different chapters along the way, but we have not. It's the first time that the city's had a document pulled all of these chapters together, and this is a guiding document, both in terms of land use and our and guiding our planning staff as well as our as our planning commission, but also it guides us in a from a financial standpoint. So with that, I'm going to ask Sherif Young to introduce Glenn Walters and talk a little bit about the process, and then Glenn will get into get into the presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. This is an exciting day. Be able to bring you all this project and talk about it this morning. It's been many months in the making. It is an exciting day. I just want to say really quick, thanks. This has really been a team effort, both in terms of the consultant, various members of city city staff, and then the community. We had several people serve as advisory committee members during this process and really appreciate their time. The community relations staff has been so helpful with some of the outreach and public participation efforts. And then the planning division staff has spent a lot of time on this, especially Heather and Stephen have really worked in the editing and reviewing drafts process. So there's been a lot of work that's gone into this. I'm going to talk just very quickly about kind of a overview level of what the comprehensive plan is, and then I'm going to turn it over to Glenn to get into all the good stuff in the plan. But the textbook answer for what a comprehensive plan is, is it's a long term guide for the future physical development of a city, and it's supposed to consider the input of citizens, businesses, and other stakeholders. The comp plan, some of the ones you've seen for other communities, they typically cover a variety of areas and provide a lot of recommendations on various topics such as future land use, community facilities, open space, recreational space, and then economic development. A good plan will articulate a vision and then provides aspirational statements about the future of city. It provides goals and then strategies that the city can take to achieve the goals. And our plan also concludes with an implementation schedule and an action matrix that helps sort and prioritize different recommendations in the plan. As Mr. Sora stated, our comprehensive plan is a bit of a first for the city. Bristol is unique and very, very fortunate to have some fantastic studies and reports on hand. But as you all know, they're often very focused on one topic or one subject and then have a specific timeline of usually five, seven years, maybe ten some, but a shorter timeframe than the comprehensive plan looks at. So this comprehensive plan does an excellent job of weaving together the priority items from our existing reports that a lot of hard work has gone into. They took information about existing conditions, and then they they wove it into a document that provides just weaves all this existing information together with community feedback, and then, of course, new expertise and insight from the consultants and looks at a horizon of twenty years, which is something that we don't have on the shelf right now. This is the third comprehensive plan I've worked on in my career, and all three have been very different. There are professional standards that planners use and that Glenn and his colleagues used to put together this comprehensive plan. And then every community puts their own spin on it. This third plan, which of course is my favorite, is because, you know, I'm from Bristol. I live here. I work here. And through the course of this project, I feel like I sure as I'm sure other planning staff members would agree, have had a chance to make this a better community. Also, in the very early days of this project, I learned I was going to have Wilson. So that certainly makes future planning very, very important to a plan. As I started, while the textbook definition is that this is a long term guide for the future physical development of the city, I really expanded my view in working on this to see this as a tool to use to make a better community now, but to also provide an even better place where kids and grandkids will want to live and see opportunities for themselves. So while we all want to see all of these projects done on our watch, the beauty of this comprehensive plan concept and the value of it to the city is that it really creates a management tool that will outlive me, other staff members, other city council members, other planning commission members, and it will keep this vision in front of future staff, city council, planning commission members, in order to keep building towards that vision and keep building towards Bristol's future. So that's just a summary of kind of the what a comprehensive plan is. Glenn's going to get more into the details with it. But they've done a really great job, Glenn and his colleagues at Design Workshop, in putting this plan together. And really, we really appreciate their hard work. So I will turn it over to Glenn to get into the documented stuff.
Thank you, Sherif. First of all, can you hear me? And second, can you see the screen? All right. Well, thrilled to be here. As Sherif mentioned, we've worked hard on this together and with the community. We, when we got here, we were just amazed at the bones that exist, and through the course of working on this with you all, things have continued to get better and better. The commercial, I think, happened during that time with the get-go standing in the middle of the road, and everywhere we look these days, there's people mentioning Bristol. So your city is just building on a really enviable foundation compared to other cities and towns that are trying to get to the same places that you are. The work that's been going on downtown is fantastic. The commitment to bring business and more vitality to it is just right on the money, and it really distinguishes Bristol over a lot of other places that are, quite frankly, really struggling to create the energy that you all have down there. We were really impressed with the community and got a sense from the very beginning when we asked people, what made Bristol great? They all said, the people that live here make it great, and we really respected that. Learned quite a bit about the arts and music traditions here and how much it has an influence over community pride and things to do, as well as future opportunities to continue to expand on that. And and have that be something really unique about the experience of being in Bristol. A cultural destination for sure, catering to different people for different activities. The the access to nature and outdoors is one of the things that struck me right off the bat. I mean, just the level of quality of the fishing waters and boating and being able to get in the woods for a hike really easily is just, again, fantastic and something that other places would dream of having. And then your economy is growing, right? There's there's good things going on all the time that are bringing different business opportunities for folks that live here. Finally, this, you know, there's a commitment to community infrastructure. The greenways in particular are something that cities are doing to rebuild themselves with, and they are driving portions of these places' economy. Businesses are getting located on these greenways, and and the ability to bike and walk is just such a fundamental part of placemaking and quality of life that and and you guys being on the front end of that is really smart. As Sherif mentioned, comprehensive plan is really a broad document. It's not a specific plan, right? It really tries to capture the aspirations of a community and articulate a vision and then put together a framework around which future work will get done. It centers on goals and strategies and action items for the future. And most importantly, it builds off of a community process. It needs to be reflective of the place that we are working in. It's not something that a planning consultant comes in and tells you what to do on. It really needs to bubble up from the spirit and aspirations of the place. It isn't, we always like to say, you know, what it is more about what kind of cake you want to be versus how to actually bake that cake with all the ingredients. So it isn't a zoning code, and it isn't a transportation study or a set of policies. It touches on these things in that it creates priorities around which one of those are important to do in order to have a complete you know, plan for how to move forward. But a comprehensive plan really sits above all those plans and studies, many of which that you already have in the works, and provides impetus for those in a centralized place for their vision and what they should focus on. So we we used an analogy about a tree to try to describe a comprehensive plan, and you know, every place sits within a region, an environment, right, that has wetlands and water sheds and and roads that work through it. And so, you know, no place is really independent of every other place, and so your roots exist in a much broader set of systems than just the one that you live in. The comprehensive plan really provides the structure and support for things that will follow. So it's like the trunk of the tree. Ordinances can out from that trunk and are reflective of what the vision was in the comprehensive plan, and then your plans and design manuals, small area plans and park plans and all those kind of things happen later. So there's kind of a hierarchy that works from general to specific, and having all those pieces in place is really important. You had a lot going on up in the trees and the limbs, and now we've added the trunk that can hold all that together and provide a nice structure to move forward with. We used an iterative process to get to the plan. It was built around stages that went from general to specific. We each at each stage, we met with our advisory group as well as conducted public meetings. And then Sheriff will admit, and we will all be happy that we had several robust rounds of review and revision on to get that final plan right and sounding good and and ready for publication. We met with the community quite a bit. It was a it was an open process. We started off with a kickoff meeting with the planning commission and council. We had several meetings with our advisory committee. We met individually with groups like schools and parks and housing people and healthcare professionals to try to get some insights on the how things were working there and what priorities might need to be put in place. We had some great interactive workshops with the community, and all those things went on the line, online and on the web. And then we also did some cognitive mapping exercises with the community. So they got their hands dirty. They also were participating in vision and strategies and spatial planning and that sort of thing. As Sherif mentioned, one of the most important things to do on one of these things is to understand what is going on around already. And we took time to review all of the documents that had been prepared and to make sure that we were starting from where you were at and moving forward from there. We also wanted to capture items that might still need to be worked on from these things within the comprehensive plan, so those don't get lost. And we created a matrix, actually, that worked, you know, through all these plans and and you know, we asked staff, you know, which one of these have been done, which need to be done, which don't matter anymore, so that we can really be clear about what is still left to be worked on, and so we didn't lose that. We organized the plan around themes. Sometimes they're organized around elements like housing and transportation, but we thought that this plan would be more cohesive if we really recognized that all of those elements like transportation and housing and open space and economic development really work more synergistically with each other, and that through thinking about themes that capture the community's aspirations, we could show the interaction between all of these elements a little bit better. So we talked about the livable built environment, harmony with nature, economy, being fair and open, health, community health, and then and then recognizing that collaboration within the region can be beneficial for Bristol. And we got a good plan, and we'll go through some of the sections on that, but the most important thing that we talked about at every turn was really that the plan needs to be acted upon in order for it to be good. And so we really were, you know, were focused on creating matrices that made responsibilities around some of the action items. We talked about when and how to evaluate the plan so that it becomes dog-eared and so that it's used and so that it's not it's not just something that looks nice but ends up sitting on the shelf. The first area, first name we worked on was what we call livable built environment. You've got a lot of that going on already. But it it dealt with some goals related to parking and multimodal connectivity, thinking about the neighborhoods that surround downtown and bringing focus to those, so that those continue to evolve into dynamic places that enable people to walk into town, which is, you know, big, a big part of where the market is going right now. Celebrating art and culture, continuing to work on downtown, and also continuing to work on the tools that would help ensure quality development happens in Bristol going forward. We talked about harmony with nature and the outdoors. We made goals and strategies related to protecting and the rural and agricultural landscape that surrounds the city, which is really important. It's one of the wonderful things about Bristol, right? You come into it through a rural landscape, and losing that would change the sense of place here. And then we talked about how green infrastructure, the way you manage stormwater and those sorts of things can become landscapes and become components of recreation systems and you know, handle things a little bit more environmentally responsible. And also think about, you know, because the outdoors and nature is so important and such a high valued item here, you know, kind of live in it in in how you do things, right? And and thinking about, you know, protecting water systems and protecting forests as you create maintenance plans and codes and buildings and and those sorts of things, and then continuing to, you know, maintain your parks and open spaces as well, and adding to those where it makes sense to enable people to walk to those from their community. We got into economic development, looking at diversification, promoting small businesses and entrepreneurship, thinking about housing, supply and affordability. One of the big topics that was discussed early on and very passionately in one of our meetings was this need to keep and attract the younger generation, that people are growing up in Bristol and they're leaving, and and we want them to come back. And so creating the infrastructure that will help support that is something that's really important and identified in this plan. Continuing to work with Bristol Motor Speedway to expand. Continuing to work with Bristol Motor Speedway to expand those opportunities, capitalizing on history and culture. And then thinking about workforce and, and how to continue to create ready employees for when businesses want to come and relocate in the area. It was really important that the, that the workforce skillset matches with the kind of industries that are, you know, that will want to see Bristol out because of its quality of life. Intentionally fair and open, dealt with some tricky stuff related to those unfortunate folks that don't have a home or are living in public housing and may be dependent upon, you know, or addicted to drugs and other things. So we spent some time creating goals and strategies that will help support those folks and, and that part of our population. We talked about community health and the need to improve that and how Bristol could really, you know, continue to champion being a healthy place and providing those things like your great parks and greenways and safe routes to school and, and all those things that will get people out and walking and biking and being in the fresh air as a way to build health. We know there was a, there's a plan for a multi-use aquatic center. Later on, we'll show some mapping that talks about, you know, considering healthy food choices and enabling people to have access to those citywide. And again, working on programs and partnerships that might help with drug dependency issues. And then finally, thinking about the region and thinking about transportation networks and thinking about how regional greenways can be created and, and, and most importantly, how the region itself can continue to promote itself and to enable Bristol to be what it is within that tri cities area. And, you know, to be the place for, to come for entertainment. It's great downtown and quality of life and those sorts of things. But to, to recognize that there's strength, you know, in, in, in the region and that each place has its own unique qualities and that through working together, it could, you can create some shared benefits and, and that will also enable Bristol to stay Bristol. We, we then moved into sort of planning oriented things, spatial planning, trying to get to a, to growth management planning or future land use planning. This is an area where we evolved, I think, how comprehensive plans are done a little bit. Many times they just take a look at what's existing there now and aren't really highly strategic. But we thought it was more important to focus on those planning actions that would really make a difference and that would support some of the goals and strategies that related to the themes. So that, I can actually, I'll just go through this list as I go through the individual slides. One of them obviously is to preserve the amazing natural environment. And so we map the topography and map the open spaces and waterways and discuss the importance of having, you know, protection for those things and to put limits on developing on steep hill sides and those sorts of things so that they will always be part of the experience of living here. And we also talked about water quality and those sorts of things. There's several transportation corridors that are key to the people's experience of coming to Bristol as well as living there. Volunteer Parkway, of course, is one of those. And we talked about the importance of creating multimodal corridors that have biking and walking and the right kind of development response associated with them. We also recognize there's roadways that are a little bit more scenic and, and maybe keeping those as more scenic is the right way to go rather than have them lined with land uses that end up, you know, ruining their scenic qualities. So we were thinking about a hierarchy of roads and gateways into town recommendations for how those roads might, might continue to grow in the future. From those, we, we started to look at how land use might evolve towards character types, right? So, and so instead of thinking about, you know, zoning in, in a zoning category sense, we, we were consolidating land uses into different types. So this idea that there might be some more intense walkable nodes that exist along Volunteer Parkway was one of those. There might be more traditional denser neighborhoods that have a full complement of land uses and retail and jobs locating uses and in places where it makes sense to do that. And then those can also exist in lower density form. And then finally, evolving out to a more rural pattern that helps to preserve the shoulders of the city, if you will. So this idea of centers and walkable places, I think, is a real opportunity to work towards as Bristol continues to grow and evolve and to think about these areas in a more specific plan kind of context. So as development opportunities come, you're prepared to position those in the right format. So you get to those things like walkability and mixed use and parks and all those wonderful things that great communities possess. We then overlaid ideas about different kinds of activity centers that range from, you know, really intense ideas out, out by the motor speedway to repositioning how some existing commercial areas might evolve over time to become a little bit more street oriented and a little bit more mixed use along Volunteer Parkway, Parkway. And then setting the opportunity that there might be, you know, some walkable centers in new places that don't exist right now, but identifying where those key crossroads are so that you can again, position opportunities within those the right way. We, as we discussed before, the, this, the neighborhoods that surround downtown are a really key component of the real estate program and the quality of life there, enabling people to, you know, live in neat old neighborhoods and walk in and bike in into downtown will just help downtown tremendously. It was also helped with this idea of keeping and attracting the younger generation and continuing to bring people to Bristol. And, you know, we think that really deliberate planning for those key neighborhoods around downtown will help to make sure that they, you know, offer up the things that are going to really support the overall economic development of the city. We talked about, you know, there's a large area, there's a lot going on, right? In the core, but as you move away from the core, access to things becomes a little more dispersed. And so as you think about growing and those logical places where you want to grow, you should also be thinking about the provisions for parks and services and food options and, and getting transit to those people so that they can get the jobs and, and so that they can, you know, enjoy the same things, types of things that people living more in the core might enjoy. And we noticed that a lot of folks living out here, you know, the, the numbers of cars and those kinds of things start to dwindle. So we were really mindful that, you know, as, as part of the vision for the city, thinking of everyone and, and enabling everyone to be their best is, is, is a function of the comprehensive plan. Then we got into thinking about, you have a bike and ped plan and then, you know, keep working with that to expand the potential for walking and biking and enable more and more access into your open space systems from neighborhoods would be fantastic to keep working on. All of that went into goals and strategies, but also we have a action plan matrix that's several pages that relates to each one of these themes. And on the action plan, we list, you know, what needs to be done. There's columns for responsibilities. There's columns for, you know, when it needs to be done and those sorts of things. And this is where the document lives. This is, this is where, you know, every year as plans within departments are being developed or CIPs and that sort of thing. This is where, this is where the list of actions gets scrutinized. You can change these over time, right? You can reshuffle them and make more different priorities out of them. But the idea is that a plan like this needs some kind of a management tool in order to make sure that things move forward. We actually did a similar one of these for Dorchester County down in Low Country in South Carolina. And it was really awesome because the economic development department called us back down there to facilitate a meeting with them when they were looking at their long, you know, their next year's plan. And they actually used the template as the, as the framework for that meeting. And that's what we hope happens, right? That, that the different departments and you all as leaders really are using the action plan matrices as a management tool to, to help ensure that this stuff gets put on a budget and gets completed. The, as we mentioned, a lot of the, you know, several of the things within the comp plan were already being worked on in other plans. But a lot of new ideas also surfaced during the course of making the comprehensive plan that we thought were neat and are going to really contribute to meeting those goals. And that relates to, you know, downtown transportation and, and spaces for cafes and creating more opportunities at Still Creek Park, rec buildings. So there's a lot of plans and studies that even, you know, that weren't considered at the time we started that are now in the process of moving forward and are fitting right in with the goals and strategies of the comprehensive plan. And, and there's just a whole ton of them here that I won't read through all of them. But all of these together are the kinds of things that will really support this vision that the community did, you know, drive for itself. And now I will let Sheriff talk a bit and I can click for you, Sheriff.
Okay, thank you. So I'm, I'm going to cover just the last little piece of this. And this is what we would say would accompany the comprehensive plan. This is the future land use plan and policy. So if you all, most of the time, this lives in the back pocket of a zoning ordinance, but this is your existing plan, future land use plan and policy. So this was adopted in 2013. It's really served the city, I think, very well as a tool. And this, you all, City Council will see mostly when we have a rezoning come before you. What we'll do is we'll say, according to the future land use plan, this area is shown as commercial. Therefore, you know, that's one of the reasons staff in the planning commission and their recommendation will, will say there's recommendation to read them to be three. So the existing future land use policy is a little fold out document like this. And it has policies on it. So what we've, what we've done is just updated that tool into what you all have as the accompaniment to the comprehensive plan document. And if you don't mind Glenn to go to the next slide, what we did was we updated the design to kind of tie it with the branding that Bristol is using now. So we updated the design of it so it, it looks fresher. Also, it's an 11 by 17. It doesn't fold up now, so hopefully we'll be able to manipulate that better and make it copies for people and having it on the website so folks can download it. We updated the policy language just a little bit. Like I said, I think it's worked well in the past, so there's not a, a big wholesale change to that policy language. But we did add land use descriptions and images. And I think this is going to be a big help to us. The, the, the previous version or the version that's adopted right now will say an area is low density residential or high density residential. But there's no real explanation of what that is in that document. So if you have this in front of you, this little new proposed document now, if you look at pages six and seven, there's a commerce, there's, there are images with a general description of what those land use classifications are. And again, it's, it's general, so it's not, it's not incredibly specific into detail, but it, it does give a general parameter of what we mean by that land use type. And then finally, we revised and updated the map a bit. This would be on page eight and nine of the document. Not a huge amount of change here, but we did round out like the pinnacle area. For example, in the 2013 map, that was not shown as commercial. And now we of course would show that as commercial. We also showed some areas as medium density residential. Again, on that previous, the adopted map now, you have a low density residential and high density residential. And we recognized that there was a need for something in the middle of those two. Cause you, you have a, a big range of housing products that can be built at three units an acre versus 40 units or an acre. So we wanted to provide a medium zone there to, to have its reference. If you're following along in the document, the next page is an insert of the downtown area. Again, just to provide better document that we can put online, make it a little bit easier to see. So those are the, the changes. One other, and Glenn's got my slide up here, but one other thing we did introduce to this revised land use plan and policy is some language to provide and like an intro, how to use the plan. The existing one does not have that information. So hopefully this will help in folks that come in and want to read our future land use plan and know how to use it, some guidelines for using it. So if you click Glenn to the next slide, this shows that revised future land use map. This is the entire city view. And then if you go, yes, this is the last page in that future land use map or plan. And that would have the inset more into a smaller area. So you can see the land use categories in a little bit of a denser area, better view. So we would suggest this as an accompaniment to the comprehensive plan document. Again, it's something that we used successfully in the past years and just want to freshen it up a little bit and provide hopefully some more user friendly language to get folks that are looking at it. And with that, I think.
I would just like to say thank you all very much for a great experience. It's just been a real professional and personal pleasure getting to know Bristol and so many of you. And you've just got a really great thing going there and keep going, you know?
Right, yeah, thank you for the compliments. And we love to, it's like our child, we love to hear compliments and love to hear what we believe about our community heard from folks who are experiencing it for the first time. We also, I think over the past several years, have really recognized the benefits of studies. There are some that still aren't to fruition yet, but because we have a study, when the time is right, right, we're ready to move with it. Also, it means we can consider and keep looking at it with no one some idea on planning or costs along those lines. So really appreciate that. Sheriff, before I ask others, is, are these studies on our website yet? And we have a hard copy of the comprehensive plan. I don't think that I've received yet the hard copy of the land use, the new land use plan. Can you let us know the plan for those?
So they aren't available on the website yet. And the, the hard copy, there should have been one with your copy of the comprehensive.
Okay.
I'll get you one ASAP.
I know I've read through the comprehensive one, so, great. So they will be on the website at some point in the not too far future. Mr. Sora is going to answer that.
We've got some process to do. This what you, this is the first rollout. If you recall, we originally talked about having pre-COVID-19, a joint meeting with the planning commission and, and have a, have a large rollout of this. Things have changed over the last month and, and we're now in electronic meetings, obviously. The planning commission will, will view this on April the 18th. There is some, some approval process before we roll this out to the public, but the planning commission will view it and consider it at. the planning commission will view it and consider it at their, at their May 18th meeting. If they approve this, then it will be on your June city council meeting to approve both the comprehensive plan as well as the revisions to the land use plan. And then it would be appropriate to post it on our website as, as at that point, it's an, it's an approved document.
Right, that's perfect. What about, does that include the land use policy? Are there enough changes or is that just a visual update?
The, the, we will need to approve both the comprehensive plan and the land use policy because there, there's, there are changes to it. And so this, we just need to update that as part of the comprehensive plan document.
Great. Okay, um, questions from council?
I don't have a question, but just, just like to say that I really appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this, putting it together because it's, it's really a great document and I think it's going to serve us well.
Other comments or questions?
The only thing, the only thing that I would say is that it has been quite a process. It's been very thoughtful. It began in 2014 and having, you know, all of us have been a part of that the whole way through. And, and I think it's going to give us the roadmap, the comprehensive roadmap that we've looked for and compliments to all of staff for an outstanding job and to Glenn and, and his crew in putting all this together. It's very fresh, it's very forward looking, and it's something that can certainly be used as we move forward with economic development as well as cultural development as well. And so I'm excited to add this document and look forward to it being assimilated into our plan of work.
Others? I would ditto what Councilwoman Powers said and also at the beginning, her comments too for, well done. Any other comments from any planning staff or from Glenn before we move on from the comprehensive plan? We thank you for being here from Asheville, so too bad you didn't get to take that beautiful trip across the mountains.
I'm bummed.
We, we love that, that trip and know some folks are doing that as an outing just to get out of the house, driving over and back just to enjoy the scenery these days. So beautiful drive. We appreciate connections with Asheville and what y'all do there. So anyway.
Yeah, well, thank you so much. Like I said, this has really been great to work on and, and staff and everyone that we've worked with in the community was, had just such a great attitude. And, and as consultants, that's something you really appreciate, you know, when, when, when a community really wants to do something and they get behind it and there's good energy around it.
We are appreciating it all the more right now and hope that the groundwork is there. And as you said, the bones are there that are good bones that as we recover from this COVID and try to manage, manage it for the next bit, as we discover more with the disease, et cetera, to try to stay under control, that we hope that we'll be quickly back to that, that vibrant energy and good feeling that, that you're recognizing. So appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I think that's it for our agenda items unless Mr. Sora has anything else to add, and I'll turn it over to him for City Council, for your city manager comments if you have any.
Yes, first I'd like some direction on our, we have advertised for Thursday meeting. Does Council want to meet on Thursday, April 30th? We've advertised it for 9:00 AM. If so, what would you like to see on the agenda?
I'll start by saying I, unless circumstances have changed at the state level or through the Sullivan County Health Department or anything else related to the, you know, related to the coronavirus, I, I don't see any reason unless we have business to conduct. And I know we've been talking, what, by the way, what, maybe what we should, maybe it'd be a good idea right now, Bill, if you could tell us what your timeline is as far as where, how we are going, how we plan to move forward with the budget.
Right.
I know there, you know, several other things that probably that other council members want to discuss, and I'm fine to meet. It's not a problem in my schedule, but as far as the, from what I see as we are reopening, I don't know pertaining to the, to the virus if we have to meet.
Think it, it would be good to talk about meetings in general right now then. Certainly we have our May 5th City Council meeting, which is our normal business meeting during the month of May. We will meet via this same Zoom format at that time. It's not a heavy agenda. We have a number of proclamations. May is a heavy proclamation month, we'll have those on there. And then we have a couple of resolutions that we will have in the body of the agenda. It's a little hard to do consent agenda items now because we, we really don't have the time to, to typically consent agenda items are either routine purchases, which we've, we're not, we aren't spending money unless it's for emergency reasons right now and for obvious reasons. The, and, or something that in terms of consent agenda, something that we've had an opportunity to discuss. So the two items that will be resolutions that will be included in the body of the agenda, those of you who have been with us for several years recall that on an annual basis, we acknowledge the pilot contribution to our revenues from BTES. And so we once again do that, we'll, we'll illustrate the, the, the dollars that are paid from our, our municipal power provider as well as, as, as the fiber, cable and telephone contribution to the city. This is a little bit less, this number, and, and I'll also touch on this in May, on our May 5th meeting, it's a little bit less than what it has been just due to the infrastructure there and the depreciated value. And that's, sometimes that does fluctuate based on, on, on the, the assessed value of their infrastructure. The, the second item will be a write-off and annually we do this also of utility debt that's greater than six years old and deemed uncollectible. This is just a function that I think it's appropriate to bring to the local governing body in terms of the write-off. It's something that's, that's recommended by our independent auditor as they review those. And Tara is, and it probably would be good for Tara to go ahead and just walk through that process and the dollar amount involved in the utility write-offs. Once again, it's something we do on an annual basis. So Tara?
Okay. One thing is, Bill mentioned, we do do this, we try to adjust the utility accounts every year. We adjust them in two ways. When we're doing the closing of the book, we look at the accounts that we deem will be uncollectible. Normally we take accounts that are over 90 days and we go ahead and we adjust the bad debt expense and we adjust the accounts receivable. Then the second part of the process is every six years or every year, we review the accounts that are six years old and then we write those off the books. And it doesn't involve bad debt at this point because we've already done that adjustment. It's simply we take it out of the allowance for doubtful accounts and we take it to cost, take it out of accounts receivable. This year we have about 470 accounts. There's only one account that's over a thousand dollars. It's an account from a, a corporation that declared bankruptcy and it is $10,000, a little over. All the remaining balances are small. I think there's a few that are a couple hundred dollars, but most are less than a hundred dollars. And all the accounts before we get to this point is we do take them to the collection agency. So when an account is terminated, we go to the collections agency and we try to collect it. And each account that's being presented to you for approval has been to the collections, all efforts have been exhausted. At this point, they're just unable to proceed further with collections. So it's just a cleanup housekeeping process to get it out of the allowance and to get it out of accounts receivable. And one thing that I did do with the resolution is I'll include a copy of all of the accounts so you can see the balances and you can see the payers and look at the top. But they're all utility related for water, sewer, stormwater or refuse. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions or needs more detail?
We'll get it next month if we, if we need it or want it.
So those are, those are the two items that we have right now as far as resolutions. There may be, there may be another item that comes in, but it, it will be a, a very abbreviated and soft agenda that we'll do on May 5th. In regards to the budget, I'd like to move that, we, we will have a work session on Tuesday, May 26th. This will be the Tuesday after Memorial Day. I think we're going to need every bit of that time to put this together. You know, we are in a, we're in a much different situation financially than the entire country is than we were two months ago. And, and trying to get the best data and it's, it's almost like, it's almost like a dartboard. Where do you begin to do your financial planning, especially in regards to consumption, sales tax? And little over 20% of our budget, general fund budget revenue is based on some form of consumption, whether it's a local option sales tax or whether it's state shared sales tax that comes back through us through intergovernmental funds, ABC taxes, all of those have an impact over the last couple of months. So trying to get the best data, the state and, and, and the various, I know there's a, there's, is a, a session that, that ECD is providing on, on, on Thursday. But these, these types of sessions that I'm talking about are educational sessions provided by either DOR or ECD, MTS, UT School of Business, all of those are trying to, to provide as much information as they can, as every local government in the country really is, is struggling to try to find what is the right formula for projecting sales tax? Not only how are we going to end this year, but also what's it look like over the next 12 months? So what, as we get into this and, and we further refine it, we would like to, to have that, that our budget session on Tuesday, the 26th. I really don't want to do that by Zoom format. This is, it's too, and most of you, well, all five of you have went through the budget session last year. This is a day long of comprehensive information sharing. We try to look at historical trends. Unfortunately, we don't have historical trends for COVID-19. So that's going to be a challenge a, as we begin to estimate what our revenue picture will look like in the coming year. But I think it's important that, that we gather together. We will practice social distancing, some of the things that we've talked about. We would have the five members of council, finance director, the city attorney, myself in, in the room. Certainly we have to have opportunity for the news media. We, we would like to do this, or the current thinking is we want to do this in our, our educational room at the nature center. That's a large room that we have. We can, we can get ample distancing and seating there. We may set up just a, a screen in an adjacent room, the news media to, to, to observe what's going on. If we only have one member of the news media, they could come in and we'd still be under, underneath 10. But trying to figure out a way that, that, that we can have this conversation and, and different from an electronic format. As you're aware, we normally have multiple screens and flip charts as we, as we roll out our budget presentation. We would envision doing the same, but also providing an opportunity for the public to have, have access to it and so forth. So we may set up a viewing room in a, in another area, the nature center. If, if, if conditions warrant, we have, we have additional individuals that want to be a part or at least want, want to monitor what's going on in our, in our budget. Again, we'll, we'll work through this process over the next two to three weeks.
I want, for that meaning, I want one of those space suit bubbles, you know, kind of Apollo, like the Apollo astronauts. Yeah, I mean, listen, I, I know we've all heard a lot of doom and gloom about internet, about, excuse me, about, you know, retail sales and that kind of stuff. But I, I can tell, and I can tell you advertising sales are way down and, you know, clothing sales nationally about 55% off. But, you know, internet sales are way up. So we may be pleasantly surprised, and I know that's a three-year tracking, excuse me, a three-month tracking thing for us, but we may be pleasantly supply, surprised because people still need to have certain things that they, that they're going to buy. I can, I can tell you also too, that toilet paper sales are way up.
Yeah. We, when you talk about looking at trends and you're absolutely right, you know, the, the, the next three months will tell us a lot. Unfortunately, we've got to bake a budget cake prior to us really having that kind of data to reflect on. And, and, and what I'm, what I'm hearing from my counterparts across the state and what I'm hearing from, from, from other areas of state government in the terms of advising local governments is, is don't be afraid to approve a budget because you always have an opportunity to go back and amend the budget mid-year if conditions warrant, either up or, up or down. We always go through, as councils aware from a housekeeping measure, we always go through a budget amendment process at the end of the year for, for our current fiscal year. So this is not something that's unusual for local governments to do. So, you know, we could, we could be in a situation where we get our, our, our Christmas sales tax numbers in and find out that, that it's rosier or not as rose and, and, and begin to correct as, as we go forward with that. So we don't, we, we won't be afraid to revisit it as conditions.
I'll say this, you just now mentioned that we are fortunate that this didn't happen in October, for instance. I mean, you know, we, we, one of the, one of the main weekends that we have missed retail wise is, was the Easter weekend. And so, you know, I'm sure sales were much lower, but we just don't know what happened on the internet sales, you know, as, as far as how things went there. And of course, we know that food and beverage and, and tourism is, you know, is, is off as well. I would like, one of the things that I know that, that we've talked about is, is areas, capital expenditures for the budget, I know were mentioned. And we also talked about, you know, multiple other things, but one of the things that I wanted to see if we could get an idea on is cost of living increases for all the city employees. And I know that's, that's a tough one, gotcha, but it'd be something if we could get information emailed out to us on what the scenario would be if we had a 3% or a 2% or a 1% or whatever it might be, just so that we can all think about those numbers. Because I know, you know, it's not been, well, several years ago, we, we went through a process and we, we didn't like the idea of, when we had a clip, a, a good budget year, actually a good, let me say this, we had, we had good numbers coming in for revenues. We did not want to do anything in mid-year as far as a bonus goes, a Christmas bonus goes or anything like that. I just thought maybe if we had, if we could be thinking about some of those numbers for the employees.
The, I think it's going to be a very, very, very difficult year to do anything in that regard. Matter of fact, from, from what I'm seeing right now, we will dip into fund balance to balance our budget next year. When you do that, you know, right now, I'm trying to build a budget around no local dollars toward capital improvements, as everyone is aware, there's a government, there's a governor stimulus grant out there, 623,000. That's what we're modeling for capital improvements at this point. I don't see, I don't see races in the coming year. What I, what I'm trying to do right now is keep everybody we have on the payroll. This is not an attractive budget year.
And Bill, I would just like to say that as we go through this process, a, a couple of things is that we've got to know tentatively what we have to work with. And we, as you said, we may not know that until we get beyond filing the budget. And so to be able to amend the budget is, is a very positive. I also think that this may just be the year where we just have to go at it bare bones to get to the next year. This may be that bridge year that, you know, we had hoped would never come, but that it has come. And, you know, it's an opportunity for us to take a look at those essential services, those essential items that we provide and, and to take care of our employees in the process to as great a degree as we can. I'm very encouraged to see staff still out, you know, maintaining everything as it's been maintained. It may be one of those years where, you know, we plan to begin walking again, but where we walk in place for a short period of time. And, and depending on how the sales tax comes back, you know, will determine how quickly we walk back. But I think that we've got to be very supportive of staff. I think we've got to be very supportive of each other on the council to realize that we are in a place that we have never been, where we had hoped we never would be. And so we're going to have to just be very flexible in our thinking as we walk our way back out of this. I'm very encouraged, I'm very encouraged, you know, seeing everything that we saw today. You know, the COVID has been devastating and very unfortunate for so many different reasons, but I am very encouraged with what we've seen today to know that our community is going to continue to move forward. But how we move forward will determine how we take care of things today. And we've got to be very prudent in, in our movement forward. And Bill, I just, I don't envy your position, but support whatever we can possibly do to move this forward. And one last thing, when will we will we have an opportunity to see some semblance of a frameworks of the budget prior to our meeting?
You know, we'll send that out as we normally do, probably Thursday before. Again, we're we're still trying to get our arms around. I have never been at this point in a budget process as we are as we are this year. You know, we were we were modeling, if you if you look and I know you all you all you all monitor the the monthly reports that come out on our on our sales tax. And at the end of February, which is the last number we have, we were about 2.5% above budget, which is which we were tracking what a great sales tax year. And then and then COVID-19 hit and what's that 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 impact? We won't see March numbers until the middle of May. And we've got to have it, we've got to have our arms well around our budget projections before the middle of May to give you all the budget by by May 26th.
Well, I think a good point, we may we may have some positive news that we're not expecting.
I hope so.
And that's a good point.
I hope so.
But that won't reflect being deep into COVID. That'll be the couple of weeks are very early, so.
Bill, I've got a question of what are we thinking as far as opening the courthouse back up and all of that with what?
Well, you know, I think one of the things that that we can do to help ensure that the opening of the local economy right now is successful is for us to practice what is embedded in that in in order number two. And that talks about social distancing, that talks about continuing to screen employees. We will continue to telecommute, really do not see any any change at all in our approach through the end of May as far as as our facilities. The the last thing we want to do, and this is this is talked about in in the in the order, is to have the that we we definitely want to protect those populations such as seniors. And I think if we begin to open Slater Center, that creates that creates those opportunities to for the for the the virus to spread to continue. So I think the best thing that we can do in supporting our local businesses is to be very proactive in terms of of not opening up our facilities too quickly. Bear in mind that both City Hall and the Slater Center also now house our public, our police operations. As we have split those, our police operations from into two facilities so that if we have an individual that's that's positive, they haven't impacted the entire the entire operation. So it's it's really my intent to to keep our operation as is through the balance of the month of May to protect our employees and especially especially our primary, our first responders as they have to deal with our community on a daily basis.
Two, two things though, Vince, one is the court, all the court system is being guided by the state for court activities. So that's some of that's come out for recommendations from the state. So for the actual court part of it, that's coming through the the state for a lot of that. And then the other is just a reminder that we, as this with city services, like Lee said, there's a lot that we hadn't closed down. Some places across the state did close parks, close different things. And we have continued to have our parks open for people to use for walking and spending some time outdoors. We have continued as we're able to do our middle school because our our building codes inspectors are still doing that. We have planning department that takes appointments and will receive papers, et cetera, from folks. And so we have a lot that's still been going on even during this time.
I'm aware of that. I was just asking of when.
Right. No, that's that was for the public to understand.
We were gonna.
Yeah.
Thinking about opening up City Hall.
Right.
Margaret, have we had information about how what what's going to happen with the court systems or is that still forthcoming?
May 30, May 31st is is the date that I'm hearing.
Danielle's got more.
There's potential for the individual judicial districts to come up with a plan to open their own districts. And so I believe that the local judges are discussing that. They would have to submit that plan to Supreme Court for approval before they could actually open. So potentially, local courts could open before May 31st, but right now they are closed through May 31st.
And that does not mean that there's not activity. There are still some some things that have been continued the whole time. So Danielle, you want to remind us?
Yes, it's they're they're close to in-person proceedings, but they are still conducting a fair amount of business. And there are offices that are open for for business right now, like the Park and Masters office is open to take delinquent tax payments. So all of those offices are still open to the public and the public can contact them, but they are not doing in-person proceedings in court.
So we'll be watching for that coming. Okay, anything else, Mr. Sora, did we, are we clear on Thursday?
Is what I'm hearing is is we won't meet Thursday. Our next meeting will be an electronic meeting on May 5th.
I would I would I would say that we keep that meeting on Thursday because I think we're going to need it.
What what would we need it for so that I can be prepared to have someone here to respond to the questions you might have?
I would think that, well, I don't know, we may need it for revising our order.
I agree.
I would keep it on because there's probably a possibility of.
That the order will change.
The order will change. There was a attorney, I'm sure you've seen the attorney general report from yesterday. So we'll probably see a change. And so I would say keep the meeting.
Danielle, would you like to speak to the AG's opinion that was released yesterday?
Yeah, I read the AG's opinion when it was released yesterday. It does, it does allow Sullivan County to continue doing what it's doing as I read it, as long as the governor doesn't withdraw his support for that, their mission. And it doesn't address all of, it doesn't address Sullivan County's order in in particular, but it talks about the local health departments that have the ability to issue their own orders as long as the governor doesn't remove that authority from them. So unless the governor actually says to Sullivan County, you know, no, you can't do what you've done in your order, I I don't know that there'd be a legal reason why Sullivan County's order would change. But obviously, this is a fast moving situation, so we'd have to keep up with it. And right now, there's only been, there's been 29 executive orders. We've had order 29 related to restaurants, but the governor hasn't issued another executive order as far as I know, at least as of this morning, related to everything else. And so when those come out, we'll have to read them and digest them.
I just thought we could keep it on and then if we need to, if we want to cancel it, we can. But since it's been advertised, then keep it on. If we need to cancel it last minute, we can. But we know how it is.
That's fine with me, Vince. And Lee, it sounds like Lee wants to do it. Bill, I mean, is there any pieces of business that we have not been able to conduct?
You know, I mean, we've 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 talked about a lot of things and it's it's been good from the standpoint of being able to have presentations that we could not have had otherwise. But I I don't know of an item, you know, I think if if you want to meet, and it's, I guess it's important really for us to make a call. If we want to meet, let's go ahead and meet and perhaps invite maybe our Department of Health officials, someone to be on the program. But if that's what you all want to do.
I'll tell you what I would rather do, and Tom mentioned this in his presentation. I mean, if we need to have, you know, our health officials here, please, I mean, don't. If if everything stayed the same and we're pretty much, you know, good there, I don't know that we need to hear from them again. But one of the things that we've been discussing that I want to continue to discuss is housing. And I do realize you don't have anything specific, I mean, you guys aren't prepared, but we have talked about this in the past and I know nothing's prepared. But if I had a, if I had to, you know, talk about anything, it would be housing. And Tom had mentioned that in his presentation and about what, actually, in his presentation, he said, what other areas do council see that we might want to add to those potential growth areas, not only Volunteer Parkway, but one of the things that I would that I would love to see, which kind of dovetails with low income housing, is the area off West State Street, actually, was it West State Street and Broad Street, I think, is areas, but when you get past, you know, Bill Gattin Chevrolet and those areas over in there where we have housing that may be able to either be rehabilitated or something, you know, talk outside the box. And that's what's just have a little discussion about it. Ideas that maybe staff has as well and other other council members.
So what I would suggest that we can take these ideas and Mr. Sora and I can talk just a little bit. But I would think, so if we do have to issue another order, we could still approve it next Tuesday. So we know that that and that falls within the seven days. So and for talking about housing or some of the other things, I really think it's a better idea and fairer to our staff that we plan that. So there is opportunity to put thought together to give us a structure, a framework to begin some discussions. I think we have good discussions, but they usually start with a framework. So I I would say at this point, we could wait until tomorrow to cancel that meeting. But so we could see if there's anything else. Danielle, what's the, can we cancel it at noon tomorrow or tomorrow afternoon? What's the schedule for canceling a meeting?
I think you probably need to give as much notice as you can, but canceling is a lot easier than scheduling. So if you cancel at noon tomorrow, that should be, that would give everybody notice that it's not happening.
Right.
Bill, I think we could just do a brief update from the Health Department and and hear from them as to how it's going right now. And, you know, it's it's not a crime to meet for 30 minutes. We certainly, you know, if if the majority of council is interested in hearing from the Health Department and wants to reserve the right to meet on Thursday, I think we could structure it that way.
Okay, input from others? We don't, we don't know what goes on behind the scenes to put these meetings together for where or how many people. We're looking at five staff people plus Tara and we're looking at eight staff people that that take time to focus and prepare and spend time with us. So just.
What do y'all want to do? Chad, Vince, Malin, what do y'all want to do?
I mean, I would kind of like to hear from the Health Department and, you know, maybe just some question. I know I've gotten some phone calls and I'm sure others have of some of this and just, you know, maybe be able to ask them some questions and clarify some things on on what's going on by on Thursday. So I would kind of like to see them, have them on the call and.
Sounds like that might be a potential of at least three. I think if we do have Health Department, that helps. I don't think we can over emphasize the health directives that we need to be encouraging our citizens to do. So having that focus with them to answer some general questions, but also to reiterate what the success depends on, I think, does no, certainly does no harm. So, okay, sounds like.
I think enough, I think enough data as well from the Health Department would be good. There was some information that came out on the media last night, yesterday afternoon, about some senior living centers, some positive testing. So I don't know if those will show up in our numbers today or or if they're already there.
My understanding, Malin, is that they took that individual to the hospital and that the test was negative once they were retested.
That's correct.
So I think we're right now, based on the information that's been given through health officials, I think we're supposedly okay there at this point.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, so so we'll have our meeting then on the 30th at 9:00 AM and we'll we'll ask both Gary Mays and Dr. May to be on the to be on the on the meeting call.
And if they're unable to be there, then we could ask for a valid update instead or see if they have other staff who could be provide an update. Right, any other comments or things to add from our council? All right, yeah, I think everybody should have received an email that there's a webinar this afternoon at 2:00 that Kingsport Chambers put together, that our chamber is participating in. Also, they will have Health Department officials and the three mayors of Sullivan County available to answer questions, go over guidelines and answer questions. So that's that's coming up this afternoon, I mean, this afternoon. Also, maybe on Thursday, Mr. Sora, I was going to ask if we could wait till Thursday for an update on our Cedar Street and also on Farmers Market again, because I know stuff is coming out. So that could be on Thursday rather than taking time today. Anyway, and I'll just reiterate that while I'll say we're watching Southwest Virginia, Governor Northam is considering seeing, because their numbers are better than Northern Virginia and Eastern Virginia. So he's looking at that and certainly Bristol plays a big role in that consideration. Also make note that as we in Tennessee are following our progress that our numbers at the beginning of this opening are much better than Georgia. So as we get a lot of national press, we were in a better position than Georgia to to reopen. Also, the governor's task force, we can see with those phone calls that they're making with the metro health departments. And they are, I expect pretty soon, even though Sullivan County rolled out some things earlier, by the end of this week or the beginning of next week, it will be pretty equal, I think. And the task force is coming out with guidelines in each of the different areas. And I anticipate not being told specifically, but I'm feeling like by the end of this week, most of those guidelines will be out, which are very helpful. But we'll remind anybody that the the basic ones for all employers and employees are on the in the Tennessee pledge and also in our Sullivan County Department Health Order. And again, reminders that the physical distancing is still in effect and so is the vulnerable populations to stay at home, avoid contact as much as possible, and then the wash hands, sanitize, et cetera. Added to the health recommendations have been to wear masks so you protect others from you and so that others protect you from them. So I'll end with that and call us adjourned and we'll see everybody on Thursday. So thank you very much.